I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're gonna start off this afternoon with the meeting, first of all, the VIA board meeting is the Board of the Advanced Transportation District. I'd like to call that meeting to order and start with just a moment of reflection as we give some thought and reflect on the work we're gonna be doing again here in the next few moments. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mr. Art, do we have any announcements to make?
No, sir.
I do think it's appropriate to start the meeting by also acknowledging and congratulating Mayor Ivy Taylor on her ascension to the position of Mayor of the City of San Antonio.[107.89][107.89](applause) Known Ivy for years and she's gonna be great to work with, looking forward to it, and I know that there are a lot of folks who are rushing off to various events that are going on this evening, and so we wanna get through with the rest of our meeting, but look forward to meeting with her and working with her in the future. With that, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I assume we had a chance to review that?
(inaudible).
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us into our individual item, and that's the approval of our bond sale. And I guess we're gonna have Steve make that presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna do a brief presentation here on VIA's bond pricing from yesterday that we had a bond issuance of $32,925,000, and so the pricing took place yesterday. The underwriting team consisted of Loop Capital, they were the senior, the lead on the issuance. The co-managers are noted up on the screen. Co-financial advisors were there, they're Estrada Hinojosa, Estrada Hinojosa and First Southwest Company, and we have representatives from both of those firms here today. Bond counsel Norton Rose Fulbright, we have Jeff Kuhn with Norton Rose Fulbright here today, and then Underwriters Council is noted up there as well for you. The bond issuance went well, there are some summary figures up on the screen showing that the par amount of the bonds was $32,925,000, kept the par amount the same as it was last fall. Net premium was $4.9 million, that was up almost $2 million, that's reflective of the bond market and the fact that it's a better bond market for issuers, so prices are up and yields are down, and so we end up getting almost $2 million more than we would've got last October. If you look at the uses side of the equation, you have a $1.5 million-ish figure going into the project fund, so we have almost a million and a half more available for the project fund generated from that higher premium. And then we are incurring higher financing costs of about $500,000, that's primarily litigation expenses. And the takeout figure for the private placement of about $5 million is the planned refunding of the outstanding private placement issue from 2012. And then finally, just one small figure on there that I didn't touch on, that VIA contribution figure is the higher interest, or the interest that we paid on those private placement bonds. The next screen shows you that, I'll just hit a couple key figures here, the true interest cost, we were able to borrow at 62 basis points lower than we would've been able to borrow last fall. The rate came in at 3.61% compared to a rate of 4.23% last fall. Total interest is about $1 million lower, almost $1.1 million lower, reflecting the lower borrowing cost. And then the PV of the debt service is about $1,400,000 lower, that takes into account the PV of all the cash flows and so on. The fall bond issue, there would've been some payments here in February and then in August, and so that's what's reflected there. The investor participation was stronger than last fall, last fall we had 17 investors, and yesterday we had 25 investors participate. And then finally, the financing schedule, you can see that the bond closing is scheduled for July 30th with several other steps shown up there as well. And so with that, I would be glad to address any questions that you may have, but overall the pricing went very well and it was a successful issuance.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Mayor Martin, do you have a question?
Is there specific language to approve this?
We have to make a motion to approve the sale, yes.
But is it, it must've been writ?
Yes. I'm sorry, what'd you say? Right. So we need a motion to approve the resolution, which, is it in the packet?
Mr. Chairman, if I could help you, I think the motion would be fine if you just said it's a confirming resolution approving the sale of that principal amount of the bonds.
Okay, do we have that motion? Yeah, a second? A motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? I would like to say, first of all, that this is excellent news. We essentially got an interest rate of 3.62%, I believe it was, is the average interest rate that was achieved. It creates the opportunity to continue to move forward with our Smart Starts program, and the fact of the matter is that I know there's a lot of discussion and challenges that have occurred, we're beyond that now, and we'll be able to continue to move forward. But I think one of the most important things it says is that the rating agencies which confirmed our AAA bond rating last week, and now the bond buyers, the folks that actually buy the bonds, have confirmed their confidence in VIA's financial management by giving this type of a low interest rate and gaining that AAA bond rating. And so I think that's something we should be proud of, and it particularly is critical given the fact that our payback is with sales tax revenues, which are more volatile than property tax revenues. So I wanna congratulate the staff for doing a fantastic job, and you, Steve, as well for the financial management, obviously, as well as the entire staff, because it really reflects the confidence of the work that we do here at VIA. And I think, that's not my judgment, that's people in New York from Moody's and Standard Empors and Fitch's, and that's the people out there in the bond market buying bonds and saying they're willing to buy our bonds and pay a lower interest rate because they know they're gonna get their money back, because they have confidence in our management. And so congratulations to the staff. So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Great, congratulations, thank you very much. Okay, I believe our legal briefing, we can cover these items, did you wanna add something?
Mr. Chairman, if I can add one thing, if I could get you to sign the purchase contract, as you know, the underwriters would like that signed, and I'll leave.
Yeah, Bonnie already wired me, she's coming up with it.[565.79][565.79](laughing) I believe the legal briefing we're gonna have, we're gonna do during our regular board meeting, and so having said that, we're gonna adjourn the meeting of the Advanced Transportation District Board and start the meeting, call to order the meeting of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees. We've already done the opening session items. Mr. Art, did you have anything else that you wanted to add today?
I'd just like to make a few really brief comments. First of all, last Friday, the Hispanic Contractors Association awarded VIA with an Excellence Through Diversity Award for the agency's efforts to increase diversity goals. The award was presented to VIA at the association's fifth annual Excellence Through Diversity Annual Gala, and it recognized VIA for its diversity measures during the construction of the South Texas Medical Center, Transit Center. VIA's diversity commitment is to recognize contributions and achievements of the employee workforce to its culture, to increase awareness, mutual respect and understanding among all employees, and develop a more in-depth appreciation for diverse workforce at VIA and the San Antonio community through involvement and education. So I'd like to recognize our procurement, all the procurement and DBE folks, if you just stand up so we can recognize you for that award. Thank you.[642.41][642.41](applause) I'd just note that that's, I think, the third diversity award we've been recognized for in the last four months, so that's a pretty good record.
In fact, just a month ago, I believe, we were recognized at the Hispanic Chambers for All Business Summit.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. At the same time, Dr. Deiani Mendoza, just note, was re-elected to the National Board of Directors in an at-large position for Comptas, so congratulations, Deiani.[672.82][672.82](applause) Next, I'd like to congratulate Alva Carrasco. Alva, I don't see you, there you are. When you're, you need to stand closer to the front.[685.51][685.51](laughing) She's our Vice President of Transportation, she's been accepted at the Eno Center for Transportation Leadership's Transit Senior Executive Seminar that will take place in Washington DC this coming September. The Eno Transit Executive Seminar is an intensive week-long course taught by nationally-recognized leaders from the transportation industry. It's tailored specifically for senior-level transit managers to further build leadership skills and understanding of industry challenges, and it's really a competitive process, a very competitive process. A lot of folks want to participate and few are chosen, so congratulations, Alva.[721.13][721.13](applause) And lastly, I would just note that we will, later in the board meeting, we will talk specifically about it, but we had, I think, one of the best meetings, and actually, most enjoyable meetings of recent times, last week with Board Member Lou Miller, when we met with the Brigadier General Robert La Bruta at Fort Sam, and we'll be reporting back on that, but I thought that, Lou, we thank you for your leadership in that endeavor, and we'll be reporting on that shortly. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, that brings us into the rest of our agenda, and it starts off with citizens to be heard.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven citizens to be heard tonight. The first citizen is Gary Barnes.
Yes, I'm Gary Barnes, and I'm a citizen writer, and I've, I'm coming to talk about the overcrowding of some of these buses, and it doesn't seem to, at times, anything's being done about it. So I'm making a proposal that when buses start to get to 85% capacity, and these regular buses, I've counted seating is around a little under 40, around 38 to 39. So 85% capacity be around 32. At that point, it must go into review of either, one, expanding more buses on the hour, or getting more lines like the Primo. Otherwise, if we don't get something, a problem's gonna get worse. So I'm going to see if something's done about this within six months, and if not, I'm going to go to the US Department of Transportation and let them know about this problem. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Damon Mason.
Chairman, President Art, VIA trustees, me, say, it is I, Damon Mason. I feel a bit embarrassed tonight because this diatribe was really intended for last month's board meeting, when I wrote an essay for what passion I feel VIA should take going forward after concluding its Southwest Connector Corridor study, two clones of which I have with me. As you will soon realize, my essay is of length that is quite general in scope. Unfortunately, there are three more essays on my council about the Southwest Connector Corridor that eat, that, that.
Amen.
Each narrow on Zoximora and St. Cloud slash General McMullen along with Texas Loop 13, so look forward to it. Aside from mentioning, I've already delivered Tracy and Mr. Glasscock a clone of this essay, I wish to emphasize a few crucial elements I am concerned will end up lost in all the excitement. Notice I said Texas Loop 13 earlier, that's not out of laziness, nor is it a typographical error of any kind. When I say Texas Loop 13, I'm not referring to either the military drive portion or the WDA right road portion on its own, or any subdivision thereof. By Texas Loop 13, I'm referring to all 21 miles, 1,056 feet of roadway, starting south from US 90, heading east past I-35 and I-37, and heading north past I-10 all the way to Loop 410. VIA, I would really like to believe you know that you know you're doing all these ambitious initiatives that you've been crying up. Still, I vividly remember the vicarious Apollo 13 flashback defined by the famous line, Houston, we have a problem, at that one board meeting where you had to report the Texas Transportation Department to help you locate Texas Spur 421. Several orange flags went up as I watched the VIA staff and Texas Transportation Department trying to define and disambiguate Texas Spur 421 right in front of the public here in this boardroom. Not only did VIA waste the time of the public that evening by not having, but its ideas both fully considered and coherently expressed, it's made it quite clear that VIA has so little esteem for the San Antonio populace without recklessly squandering public funds such things that the Texas Loop 345 BRT was supposed to be out of mixed road traffic, but ended up an overpriced curb-running service route, and now the modern streetcar system. Upon reading how Detroit is withholding vital water service in a bid to squeeze blood out of a stone when many of its debtors simply cannot pay, I am frightened for San Antonio if VIA does not embrace a hefty reality check with a not-so-ice light side of humility in the very near future. Rum I told you about the Federal Reserve, along with how China and Russia are leading several other countries through setting up a trade bloc which does not use the United States Dollar as the world reserve currency? How long do you think it will take before all the fine details are ironed out so all the trade bloc members understand what they are to do? I probably imagine this will be accomplished in much greater degree than what I have had demonstrated here. VIA, my council unit has a broad scope but is that straightforward enough to be broken down thus? No more of this arrogance. Stop behaving as if a wallet thick with the hash is a matter of moral, ethical character incompetence. Stop passing the buck. Those outside consulting firms did not come to you on your own. You summoned them, you hired, and you hired them. More to the point, you do not have to act upon the council on that expensive research, especially when the consultant firms from outside the state does not have to deal with the aftermath of its council. Put another way, this is noted, moral hazard I want it stopped. On a related note, make use of your own personnel, along with any volunteers from the public, whenever you need to conduct research for a capital project, and only report to consultants for discerning what data to get along tabulating it at the end.
Michael Andry.
Considering that your security sentries and transit police both have the advantage of greater numbers and that they are packing heat, why would they be so concerned that I have a tray full of ice water?
Michael Andry.
Sorry, but your time has expired. Thank you.
I have it, I have it here.
Thank you.
Hello, VIA trustees, I haven't met all of you yet, my name's Michael Andry. I go to, I go to, I work at a golf course called Coolcrest, it's just up Fredericksburg Road from here. My family owns it, and we've enjoyed the benefits of having two VIA Primo stops nearby. Also, in regards to the Primo, I was on my way here, stopped to have lunch at the Chick-fil-A at the medical center, it's right near the University Hospital Station, that, together with the Medical Transit Center, has greatly improved how walkable our medical center A question, however, is, the question I have regarding the Primo is, there are sidewalk improvements that need to be done in the vicinity of Coolcrest, because the sidewalks near the Huizaj Station are not, they're not in good shape, or they're non-existent, so we would like to know when these, those improvements are gonna be executed. The second subject I wanna talk about is our West Side Multimetal Transit Center. I understand that there have been, we understand that there have been a few delays in that particular project, so when are we gonna get that thing open? And when we do get it open, which bus routes are we gonna, which bus routes are you gonna route so that they go to the center? The Greyhound Terminal at St. Mary's and Martin, I think that thing's getting, it's getting old, it needs to be replaced, it's obsolete, so are we gonna move the Greyhound over there? The Megabus at Broadway and Forest isn't very accessible to several VIA routes, so are we gonna move that there too? Are there gonna be taxis routed at the West Side? And will there be bike accommodations at the West Side Multimetal Center? As for, as for your streetcar project, I'm glad that you all released more details at the press conference, I enjoyed being there, about more possible benefits in regards to the streetcar project. My question regarding our streetcar project is, how are y'all gonna power the, how, power the substations, the electrical substations? Are we gonna have to draw power from the grid, or are there gonna be solar-powered, battery-powered, or how are we gonna get power for that? Thank you all, y'all, nice evening.
Thank you for your questions, and we'll be getting some responses to you from the staff.
Lori Zertucci.
Yes, I wanna give a compliment to VIA. I've been trying out going to the gym early in the morning, and they've been on time, but the reason I switched to VIA is because the cab service, I tried them out, first I requested like a 4:00 AM, and 4:40 would come, 4:55 would come, and they would never show, and so I would call, and, well, we're trying to get somebody in the area, they start at 4:00, so that means they don't start giving out the calls till 4:00. So I tried 4:30, and it would come 5:00 or 5:15, or, you know, and I made one complaint, I think it was July 7th or 8th, and never heard from anybody. So I called the complaint line, VIA, and all they said was, you need to call the yellow cab. So, nothing is being resolved with this system, that they're not very, very good early in the morning, and, but I have good results with VIA Trans, 'cause I had to go through them since they're not working out the cabs. And my second one is the IVR, I called the 2020 line too, and I haven't heard anything from them, but when I would call and make my reservations, and then when it gets time to the, for it to read my times, nothing would happen. And then I made a reservation today for next week, and I entered the time, and it said, I'm sorry, we're not able to, I did not, we did not understand the entry. And so I entered it again, and it still says that, so I just wanted to say the IVR is kinda messing up. Plus, they call when you're on the van already, or they don't call at all, that the van's on the way. Today, they called me to tell me that the van was on the way from the lighthouse over here, but, you know, it's, sometimes it's feast or famine. Thank you very much.
Willie Mae Clay.
I'm Willie Mae Clay, and I've been coming consistently for the last three months or so, addressing the issue of the 30-minute window. And I must let you know today that since I've been coming and talking about the need to improve elements of the 30-minute window, things have begun to improve. Lori just addressed the issue of the advanced notification call. I must, I must say that lately, it's, it's been working in terms of being activated. Sometimes it will call maybe five minutes in advance prior to the arrival of your vehicle. Sometimes it will call exactly at the 10 minutes, it did that today before I came here. And sometimes it will call when you're actually on the van. So I urge the riders of VIA Trans not to really rely on that advanced notification system. Now, I want you to use it now, and I want it to get better, but we need to keep in mind that the van can come 10 minutes prior, and we need to work on that now, that acknowledgement, okay? So keep up the good work, all right, and I commend you for taking my comments seriously, all right? Thank you very much.
Carmen Tia Greer.
Good evening, I'm Carmen Tia Greer, and I serve with City or San Antonio as their Chief of Staff, and I just wanted to take a moment of your time tonight to thank VIA for your support of City or San Antonio, which you've been a supporter since its inception in 1995. Your support, the support we receive from VIA literally makes it possible for our AmeriCorps members to perform their service in schools and throughout the community of San Antonio. City or San Antonio gives young leaders the opportunities and skills to change the world through a year of full-time service. City or AmeriCorps members help to address the nation's dropout crisis through tested methods that address the ABCs of school success, attendance, behavior, and coursework. This year, City or San Antonio will have 116 AmeriCorps members that will serve as tutors, mentors, and role models in 11 schools in the city of San Antonio. VIA's support has been an essential part of our core member service and the development to understand the communities in which our core members serve. Riding the VIA bus presents our core members with a ground-level view of the community as well as providing them the opportunity to be a vital neighborhood asset to other commuters during their daily commutes. Our core members make less than minimum wage and spend nearly 60 hours a week of service in our city's schools. Our unique relationship with VIA is critical to getting them to and from their daily service. We thank you for your partnership, your support, and desire to keep our community connected via transit. VIA, your generosity has been and continues to be paramount to the success of City or San Antonio. Next month, we would love to have some of our core members address the board with their thank yous and their wonderful experiences that they've had riding VIA. Thank you.
Beris Haj.
You are my sunshine, my only sunshine. I need to give this to the VIA board, y'all had a security that was harassing people at crossroads, July the 4th, between 1:00, 12:00 and 1:00 o'clock. So I need to give this to y'all, make copies for each board member, y'all have somebody can take this, and this is the guy's name that was doing the harassment. No, I have to put this out of my hand and your hand, okay? Thank you. Now, I wanna talk about July the 4th, I got there between 12:00 and 1:00, and the security was putting everybody out the building, young people, babies, everybody. So he came over to where I was, he said, how long you been here? I said, I don't know. He said, what time you leaving? I said, I don't know. What bus you going to catch? And I told him what bus. So he said, you are a lottery man. So he said, "You are a lottery man." I said, "What are you talking about, man? The police department cannot move nobody from those bus stops unless it's four or five hours." And they had new policemen. And they said, "No, you can't do that. We might get sued. VIA is gonna get sued. VIA is gonna get fined for harassing senior citizens, young kids, pushing them out in the cold, and stuff like that." And that's not right, VIA. Now, case, oh, Mr. Pizinho, when y'all decide to vote on these different cases, when y'all get sued or sue somebody, y'all need to put the name of the peoples and the numbers, so we know who they are. You said, "Well, we're gonna go into executive session." And you did not have a quorum, Mr. Pizinho, when y'all first voted. Bobby Pettis wasn't there. Two or three other people. Y'all had about three or four.
We had a quorum.
Sir?
We had a quorum.
No, you did not. We can, we can run the tape back. I always count when I come here. That's the first thing I do. You did not have a quorum. You had four people, and Bobby Pettis and this lady right here came in.
No, I've been here all along.
Well, you know, you weren't in, you'll see when they hear roll call. That's all I'll go by, okay?
I was. I went out to get a water, and I came in.
I know you went out. I saw you when you went out. You did not have a quorum, Mr. Pizinho. So y'all gonna have to vote on that again. And if not, you're gonna have to talk to the Attorney General. That's the first thing I do, is count heads.
Me too.
Sir? I know you do, but y'all didn't have a quorum. I saw her when she went out the door. But anyway, y'all wasted my time, so I'm gonna have to write y'all. Oh, Leon Valley, y'all need to put another bus over there, having them run it every 20 minutes. Y'all need to come back with the 87 bus about 15 years ago, going down Banderas to Halotas, because the 88 is running, always running late. And the Primo bus is doing good, but y'all need to put one more Primo bus. You are my sunshine. But anyway, I got to go in about another minute, so y'all have a good day. And if y'all want me to write down the people that was here, Mr. Pizinho, when you, when you call, roll call, I can call the names, okay? I am not stupid. Y'all have a good day, all right?
There are no more citizens to be heard.
Some people are stupid, but I'm not stupid. Anyway, y'all have a good day.
Okay, that brings us into our next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. And I think each of those have had a chance to review the items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there anything, item, anybody would like to have pulled for individual consideration?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next item is individual items, item number six, which is the Fort Sam Houston update. And I believe Charlie Gonzalez can give us an update on that, and I also will call on Lou Miller, who's been taking leadership role in this for years, to give us a report as
Good afternoon. Last Thursday on July 17th, we did meet with the commander there at Fort Sam, General Robert Labruda. Present for the meeting, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, was Lou Miller, and Jeff Arnt also attended. Minnie Sanchez from State Senator Van de Pewt's office was present. Francesca Caballero from then-City Councilmember Taylor, now Mayor Taylor's office, and Richard Leal, who is a businessman right outside the gates there of Fort Sam. Other VIA staff included Priscilla Ingle, Richard Martinez, and Stephanie Suarez. I believe I may have covered everybody. We had a really great discussion, and thanks to Lou Miller's, what we had was a simulation of what might be different solutions to reopening New Braunfels Avenue. We went over some of the history. The general is actually a San Antonio product, so he was pretty familiar with some of that history. What was decided, and then Lou Miller can go ahead and, and expand on some of what I'm gonna discuss, where we are today, and Stephanie Suarez is here, who has been assigned this particular project. But my understanding is that we're following through with setting up meetings with our staff, our engineers, project managers and such, with the complement staff at Fort Sam Houston. We will also be meeting with an individual who's been very involved in that project, and I believe it's Mr. Fluger. I'm not sure, Lou, if that's why you pronounce his name, because he came up with some of the original ideas. The, the question is, when we finally come up with the concept, will it address the security concerns expressed by General Labruda, and of course, funding? But like I said, we're off and running on the follow-up, and with that, I would just turn it back over to the Chair and Mr. Miller.
Thank you for that report. Lou, did you wanna add anything to that?
Just a couple of more comments to advise my fellow board members that, in meeting with the general, that we got a very, very positive response, which is something that we've never had since, since the 9/11 closing. The 9/11 closing of New Braunfels Avenue caused public safety issues. It caused traffic issues. It caused increased travel time for our, for our VIA patrons. And now that we finally have some positive response from the general, we addressed all of his issues and all of his concerns, and now we continue to move forward, and we intend to move quickly to handle those issues. And I think the general also was encouraging VIA to provide a circulated service on the base itself. So that's also an issue, where we're going to provide more ridership, we'll be a better corporate citizen, and we're also going to be very supportive of our troops.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I think one of the key points that's been raised several times is, if we can get this done, we could have a north-south connection from Loop 410 North all the way down to the South Side through Brook City Base and the extension to Loop 410 South. It'd be a huge thoroughfare addition to, to our community, and one I think is an important project. Thank you. Jeff, did you wanna add anything?
Again, I just wanna recognize Mr. Miller for his leadership. I think it was a fantastic meeting. Obviously, I had not attended earlier meetings, but I understand that in most earlier meetings, it was kind, there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm for these options, and, and we were very pleased by the response.
That's very encouraging. Thank you. Okay. Item number seven is a report on September service changes, and I believe we've got a presentation being made by Mr. Manning. There he is.
So Tracy's gonna go through this fairly quickly, 'cause this is about the fourth time around, but it is for, for action tonight.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Tracy Manning, Service Planning Area. And so, as Jeff said, this is what we brought last month, and we had our public comment period. We had public hearings on June 30th and July 2nd, and all the comments received were positive regarding the changes. And the major changes that we have are the 515, the Walters extension up to Fort Sam Houston, and then adding the, the USO Express routes on Sunday service, the 16 and 65 that serve Fort Sam Houston and Lackland, the 36, the 551, and the 46 change on, on Main as it closes, what the routing would be. And this, again, is the route, the 515 extension on Walters from McCrayless, and its connectivity. These are the two routes, 16 and 65. And this was the, there was a, in the public comment period, we did have somebody comment to change slightly the 36 change going down to Sidney Brooks. This is the addition, just to go on the outbound, or when they're coming down, pressa, to use Old Carpus Christie as they enter in. And so we made that change. This is the change on 46, and again, this will not happen until Main closes. Probably will coincide with Alamo, South Alamo opening up. And then, of course, the Route 600 MedLink, we're looking for the elimination of this route because of the poor performance. And again, this route is covered by some other route in every segment, and that's one of the reasons for the poor performance. If you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions? Do we, this requires approval, right? Do we have a motion on this?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. If there are further questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our next item, which is the Modern Streetcar Advisory Committee format and officers. And I believe Deonny's gonna be making his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I've asked Stephanie Suarez, as you know, who is the staff liaison for the Modern Streetcar Advisory Committee, to join me at the dais right now. Tonight, we're here to, on an action item with regard to format and officers of the Modern Streetcar Advisory Committee. We are seeking your approval for the appointment of both the Chair and Vice Chair of the Modern Streetcar Advisory Committee, so that we can conduct the business of the committee and through you have access to that leadership. Our recommendations are that the following individuals be appointed as officers of the committee, and that is the Chair to be Ramiro Cavazos, who represents the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the Vice Chair to be Jackie Gorman Johnson, who represents San Antonio for Growth on the East Side or Sage. That is the staff recommendation before the board for your approval this evening.
Thank you.
And just wanted to let you know that Mr. Cavazos is in the audience.
Maybe I reconsider my motion then, Alan. Motion for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. I think this would be a great way to link up all the various stakeholders that are involved in the Streetcar Advisory Committee, because it'll help us move forward as we move forward with this project. As you know, our Streetcar Advisory Committee now is made up of about 25 members or somewhere in that area, and, and the leadership of Mr. Cavazos will be very beneficial as long, as well as the assistance of Jackie Gorman Johnson, who'll be able to help out as Vice Chair, again, bridging the, bringing the community together and, and helping us move forward as we get organized and appreciate their willingness to serve in these leadership capacities. So we have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to also just ask with regard to format, as you know, in the Modern Streetcar Advisory Committee, the charter indicates that VIA will post all of the Modern Streetcar meetings, and we will continue to provide meeting minutes and other documentation, and that the meetings are open to the public, and anyone, including media, is invited to attend. Staff just wants to reconfirm that that is the will of the board, and that that is the direction you want us to continue to follow.
I think that was an issue that was raised by some members of the committee at the, at the meeting, initial meeting. We indicated that, that that was the original intent in the charter of the committee, but that we would come back to the board to confirm that, and I do think it's important to continue our, our principle of being transparent in terms of the discussions. And so, I don't know, do we, I don't, I don't think we have an item on the agenda to approve.
The current, the current charter
Oh, yeah.
is, is written in that manner, so I guess the question is whether the board would direct us to change it, or whether we preserve it just because the issue was raised. It's not necessarily a vote, it would be a direction, or simply, yes, we're satisfied. Correct.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Could we just say that it is the consensus of the board that, that transparency be paramount, or that we would? Can we continue with the, with the charter?
As it is.
Would that be a fair vote to take?
Yes.
To just confirm the, the charter, and, and that's still a consensus of the board, that we continue with the principle of transparency as expressed in the charter? It's not really taking any action, it's just, it's just a consensus of the board.
Based on what we're being directed through, it's gonna stay the same, just under the breakback to the board for a second.
Okay.
So it doesn't really require a vote. What's in place stays in place.
As long as everyone is happy, we will maintain what's in place.
I think, I think there's a clear consensus of that. Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't see Ramiro, but there he is.
There he is.
Thanks, Ramiro. Did you wanna add anything? And, and thanks for being here.
Thank you for the honor to help, and it's an important initiative for our city, and we are very supportive, and we'll do our best to get the word out about the value of our transportation and staying in pace with the population growth and our needs of our communities. So thank you for the VIA trustees and the staff, the leadership you all are providing, and we'll do our part.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is a report on transit supportive land use.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. This evening, Ms. Katandra Noy, our manager of planning, along with Mr. Chris Porter from Cambridge Systemag, will give a presentation on transit supportive land use and a partnership we'd like to develop with our local municipalities, and there is an action item and a resolution associated with this item, so.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Katandra Noy. I am the manager of strategic planning in the Bus and Rails Strategic Planning Division. Jason Rodriguez is the project manager for this effort on the VIA end, and to my right is Chris Porter with Cambridge Systematic. So we thought we'd start with, why is it that we're doing this effort? What is driving us? And the bullet points above showcase those issues, the reasons why. We want to, first and foremost, provide efficient services and provide for the transportation needs of our citizens. The opportunity for federal funding is also a consideration, and to maximize our ratings in the small starts land use component of that evaluation. How we get there is a lot, a lot to do with collaboration with our regional partners, and also coordinating with different agencies on planning efforts. The timeline that you see in front of you, it illustrates the, the vision that the VIA board had, and, starting from 1998 and through 2009, there's various different activities have taken place to begin this dialogue of how it is we make the San Antonio region a more transit supportive place. As we all know, back in 2011, the VIA board adopted the Long Range Plan, and by 2012, we were well on our way to the implementation with the SmartMove program, and that was also the same time that MAP 21 came out from the federal government, which provided guidance on expanding the role of land use as well as affordable housing in the evaluation process. And then in 2014, we had the Southwest Connector Corridor Analysis, as well as the North-South-Central Corridor Analysis initiated. So it all starts with community and neighborhoods. A city is comprised of various neighborhoods, and what you see in front of you are development patterns that are representative for all of San Antonio. The Stone Oak area, the area near and around the airport, and then the area near the Pearl area, all are represented here. Different communities, different product types, and different solutions that VIA is striving to provide. Transportation is provided through different means, and you see in front of you different ways that the roads that are, that dot across San Antonio are designed to do this. You have fast travel on highways, which moves people quickly. And then on more local connector roads, regional roads, like a San Pedro or Blanco, you have travel that is not as fast as a highway, because there's stoplights and different land uses along the road. And then you have a more neighborhood road. So different types of roads for different speeds and different ways of serving the community that we live in. We're striving to have just the same kind of diversity within our transit offerings that exist in the road system here. Fast travel, which can be seen with Lone Star Rail or the Managed Lane System. Less fast, regional kinds of connections with our local bus Less fast, regional kinds of connections with our local bus service, our Primo service, or a light rail service, and then more neighborhood service, which would be our streetcar or a local bus. We come back to this slide to illustrate that the Board really had that vision of moving forward and getting going on the Long Range Plan, establishing a vision that supports the needs of the community. How do we do that? How do we actually implement the direction that you have given us? The main way that we do this is through three major areas: the programs, projects, and policies. For example, the Smart Move programs are a set of programs that are designed to move things along. Projects such as our Modern Streetcar project is a part of those programs. And in policies, like complete streets and affordable housing, all provide the maximum value and benefit for our community. So we put this image up here to illustrate how these, all these concepts come together. So this is a photo montage of our streetcar project. And the different boxes that you see there, you see different policies and programs that come together to make a project a success. Affordable housing, there could be affordable housing right near our investment. Joint development, working with the private sector to encourage more transit ridership. Complete Streets, which is an initiative that the City of San Antonio has taken on. Public Art, a program that we are in the process of developing here. And then the Transit Supportive Land Use pieces of it. You will hear in the next few minutes more about the transit supportive and affordable housing elements of how it is we are working to implement your vision.
Thank you, Katandra, and thank you, Board members, for your time this evening. Again, my name is Chris Porter, I'm a principal with Cambridge Systematics, and I've been working for 18 years on the intersection of transportation and land use, trying to help communities function better. And a lot of that time has been working with the Federal Transit Administration on their Small Starts and New Starts Program, as well as with other transit agencies and other project sponsors like yourself, who want to make a better linkage between transportation and the communities that it serves. So just the work that we've been undertaking for VIA over the past six months, we've really been focused on improving system usage with better linkages, and positioning VIA for a strong rating on federal funding criteria for small starts, and doing that by working with the City of San Antonio and potentially other municipalities in the region to look at ways of making their land use policies, plans, their codes, and their development practices more transit supportive. So the FTA criteria for small, new and small starts, there's two criteria: economic development, which is land use plans and policies, and then existing land use. Together, those make up a third of the project justification rating, so, which is half of the overall rating. So it's an important piece in terms of getting federal funding for, for projects. This is our schedule of work. We started off in January, working with agency staff to develop a vision of VIA's involvement in this issue. We undertook a review of the plans and codes of the city and of other suburban municipalities. We had some workshops with staff from the city and the Housing Authority and other stakeholders to review all of that in, in May. And currently, we're working on three products. We're working on a Transit Supportive Land Use Guide, a more detailed toolkit, and then an Affordable Housing Policy Toolkit that explains ways in which we can preserve and expand housing near transit to benefit people who really need to use transit the most. So this supports, this directly supports VIA's small starts application for the Modern Streetcar through the various factors. And we are actually, there's, we have a specific request tonight for an additional step you could take, which would be to develop, or to agree to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of San Antonio, and also with the San Antonio Housing Authority, to continue coordinating on transportation and land use policy, to really continue the work that you've already initiated. And we're also recommending that you work in the near term to work with the city on changes to their Unified Development Code that support transit. This is, I think you've seen this before, but this is a way of thinking about stations that VIA has come up with, different typologies of stations that are appropriate for different neighborhoods, different types of land uses, from really the highest density urban standard uses, to Main Streets, to neighborhoods, to commuter stops. And one of the things that we're doing in our guide is we're fleshing that out more with some specific characteristics for those typologies that are appropriate, in terms of things like density, mix of uses, pedestrian connectivity, parking. And we'd like to see the City of San Antonio and other municipalities really work that policy into their comprehensive plans, and with the current city comprehensive plan update that's in progress, we think that's an excellent opportunity to do that. And that's something you can use as a guide for more detailed station area and transit corridor planning and zoning changes. This is just an example of a typology for a Main Street. You can see with the illustration how the buildings are drawn up to the sidewalk, so it's convenient for transit riders. You've got activity on the street, you've got good pedestrian connectivity with the crosswalks, street trees. You know, this is the type of environment, it's really a no-lose situation, because it works for the people who are driving, it also works for the transit riders and the pedestrians. So this is the type of thing that, you know, we'd like to promote through, through this One thing, an immediate opportunity, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan, just making sure that transit is included in that, that high-capacity transit quarters are identified, area types are identified, that code amendments come out of that process. VIA can really be engaged in a partner to help, as a partner with the city, to help them understand how to do that as that issue comes up in the comprehensive planning process. And then again, as I mentioned, the code amendments, there's a near-term opportunity with the 2015 update of the code, to do things like improve the language regarding pedestrian connectivity, transit facilities, that sort of thing. And then there's longer-term changes that are going to be, need to wait for the comprehensive plan to occur, because they're really going to come out of the framework that the city and the citizens of San Antonio come up with in that process. We also have begun coordination with the suburban cities. We've, as I mentioned, reviewed plans and code of nine municipalities. Our toolkit we're developing is going to include strategies that they can apply, and we're going to set up some meetings with some of the cities to discuss where they're thinking about transit and land use, and how we can best help them, realizing that this is really an early stage for a lot of them, but something that they can be thinking about, and that can help even support express bus service and some of the service that VIA has out there now, in addition to potentially future high-capacity service. Affordable housing policy, it's another issue that the Federal Transit Administration is really putting a big emphasis on, with a lot of communities concerned that with transit investments, you get rising property values. It pushes out a lot of people who might other, need to benefit from the service. So we've been having discussions with the city and with the Housing Authority on policies, strategies to preserve and to expand affordable housing in transit quarters that really preserves mixed-income housing for a full range of users, of residents and VIA riders. And then, as VIA updates its own long-range, long-range plan, it's another opportunity to coordinate with the city on how you think about transit quarters, reaching out to other municipalities in the MPO boundary as part of that process, and including a land use component. When you look at your own route expansion and high-capacity corridor development, making sure that the places you go are the places that municipalities want to change land use to be more transit supportive. So this is specifically, the resolution asks for agreements to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city, to coordinate, to continue to working cooperatively on transit supportive land use policy, and also with the Housing Authority, to continue to cooperate in developing policies to link affordable housing and transit. I've been doing reviews for FTA for over 15 years of new starts and small starts applications, and I can tell you that having this type of agreement in place really demonstrates the transit agencies and the city's commitment to continuing to work on this, so that FTA understands this is not just a one-time thing that you've done to support your application, but you really, you really committed to that. And that if it's possible to get these agreements in place by September 15th, which is the deadline for the small starts application, it would definitely strengthen that application. So this, the agreement would basically, again, would just state what the city's responsibilities are, state what the VIA will do, affirm your shared interest, and basically just stating that you're committed to continuing to work together on land use policy and code changes. So I think I mentioned these, these next steps already, in terms of finishing this stage of the work, on working with the city on comprehensive plan amendments, on our code amendments in the comprehensive plan, engaging with the suburban municipalities, and even engaging with the developers and the public in helping them understand transit supportive land use benefits, and taking the guide that we develop and using that as a tool for that. So as again, as I mentioned, I think these are all things that will benefit you regardless of what happens with your transit investments, even for existing transit service, and making it more user-friendly for VIA riders, and increasing your ridership, as well as supporting future high-capacity transit. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation. You know, this is really, first of all, do we have a motion to approve the resolution? No move. Yeah, a motion and a second, and just as we start off discussion, let me just say, this is really an important part of what we're doing. If you look at the comprehensive plan that we were basing our Smart Starts program on, our Smart Move program on, it's designed to deal with transportation needs in different parts of the community in different ways, and that includes congestion issues, it includes access to mass transit, it includes circulator opportunities, a whole array of different approaches to deal with transportation issues in a comprehensive way. But when you start thinking about comprehensive planning, you've got to think about other aspects of it as well, such as the economic impact, such as housing, such as development opportunities, such as gentrification issues that can occur. And all those things can be dealt with, and this is a way, a good way to do it is to enter into these memorands of understanding with the city and with the Housing Authority, because we're all, we're all players in that, and it needs to be dealt with in a comprehensive way. So I think this is important to move forward. You know, I'm hopeful that this process gets the kind of attention that it deserves, because it's an important part of the strategy as we move forward. As we've seen with our experience in the recent weeks, and the discussion about the streetcar portion of the comprehensive transportation plan, which was developed over a five-year period, you know, we had over 200 meetings in the community, and, and so it was out there being discussed, but again, folks didn't really pay attention to it, so it became a controversial issue. And hopefully, I think folks will come to a better understanding of the comprehensive approach to planning, that this involves including transportation with housing, with development policies. Ultimately, the city looks at it with water and other utility extensions and things of that nature. So it's really an important element of, as we grow. Any additional comments? Yes?
Just a couple of questions, and Brian, maybe you can kind of help me out. With respects to the UDC process, you know, it's cities every two years now, and so the opportunities to revise and amend are unique. So that's something that we're on top of on a regular basis. I saw the highlights, the bullet points, but I mean, from a overall system-wide concept, have we looked at that? And I know the city says they're going to approve by the end of the year, and because it's such a big process, likely that won't happen for another six months after the end of the year. So...
Yeah, we have looked at the current one, but also preparing for the next two-year cycle to get into that, and make sure they have an understanding of what VIA's transit opportunities and needs are based on this. So yes, we're on top of that.
And just, I'll add, I saw just on the PowerPoint, you guys noted, noted some land use issues as of right, and so historically, that's always been an issue with the system. And so maybe we can kind of broaden that, and just keep an eye and see where on the land use side, things are a matter of right versus a zoning application process, because this entity is still subject to that process.
Sure.
So I'd ask that you guys take a look at that, not only on this, but everything else. I appreciate the presentation, and the backup material, you provided a copy of the resolution. I did not see any drafts of the proposed agreements with SAHA or San Antonio. Do you have those yet?
Got it.
Can you make sure you guys circulate those? I'm interested to see, see what it is. This is something we talked about at one of our other committees, a different concept on the housing issues. Totally behind this concept in this motion, I think we need to spend as much time as possible, you know, as our community grows, how we move our people becomes more and more critical every day. And I think we play a big role in the development of our communities, as well as all our housing stock and issues, and otherwise. But thanks for the presentation.
It's my understanding that these are memorandum of understanding, and the actual memorandum of agreement will be brought back individually to the Board.
My request, Mr. Manager, I mean, Mr. Chairman, is, and I noticed that...
Thank you, Councilman.
When you said gentrification, you looked at me, so... But my request is really just to get an idea of what we're going to be asking the city, you know, to agree upon or opine upon.
Or what they're going to be asking us to agree.
Exactly. I mean, just to, the city's got some great programs, the county's got some great, you know, and probably maybe not as relevant here. You know, everything we see with Balcony Heights and Castle Hills, and you know, all those entities are doing different things on, you know, housing initiatives. It makes sense, and SAW is, you're right, is in the middle of the mix on impact fees, and CPS not as much, but every time that there is a, a project, all the entities are asked to participate. And so ours might be a little different, but I'm curious about that.
And that, that interesting, that will be brought back to us, with individual commitments?
Actually, I don't, I don't need it for, for approval, I'd just like to see it.
You want to see?
Yeah, I know, absolutely. I've got no desire to approve it formally. I would just like to see it, see a draft of it, or see what it looks like.
Right, because the first document is simply an agreement in principle.
Yes, the resolution would give Jeff or his designee...
Sure.
...the authority to go and talk with the city about the concept.
I get that, yeah, I get that, but in the resolution, there's three bullets: SAHA, the city, other governmental entities. I just, just want to see what the idea is.
Okay.
I definitely have no desire to approve it and discuss that, not unless you wanted to go by it word for word in a public debate, but that's not my goal. I just wanted to see it.
We're happy to share it.
I'm supportive of the resolution, and to see what it is.
Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just a question on, more on process. We are, we are one player of many in the comprehensive planning process and land use. So I'm hoping that when, in, you're working with the city, that, that you also keep an ear to what SAW's impact fee process is and the program is, because they pretty much tell you where things are going to be the next 10 years out. So we can start looking at routes and, and what kind of transportation methods we should be addressing for that 10-year out, and also looking at what, what and if and when the city will be annexing, because if the city will be annexing, then some dynamics change. But if they don't, and it's just the county still, and the county can't provide those kinds of services, then what will VIA need to do to step up, to assist in that area as well?
Very good points, we'll keep our ear to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to our next item, which is the Modern Streetcar Update. And Brian, I guess you're going to lead it off with that as well.
Sure, so we're going to have a double presentation here. Starting off, we're on 10A, Economic Impacts of the Modern Streetcar. Mr. Steve Niven with the Sabre Institute, along with Eric Hovey of ED Hovey and Company, are with us this evening to discuss the final results of the economic impact study associated with the Streetcar Program.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and fellow Board members, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Steve Niven, I'm here with my colleague Eric Hovey, along with our other colleague Jay Farwell, and our colleagues at IDC, Chuck Shine is here as well tonight. our colleagues at IDC, Chuck Shine is here as well tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to conduct this update to the economic impact of a streetcar in San Antonio. We're going to go briefly through the methodology and look at the results. I'm going to start talking, just introduce the methodology, or start talking about the methodology, and then I'll turn it over to Eric and let him get into the details of that, since he did the bulk of the analysis, and then I'll come back on the economic impact results.
Steve, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've just been informed that one of our trustees has to depart in about twenty, twenty-five minutes or so, and we're going to lose a quorum. And so, we have one more action item, I believe, that's on the agenda that we need to deal with. And so, with my colleague's concurrence, what we may do then is take up that last action item and then come back to this presentation. I apologize for that, but things got away from us. We lost a board member as well. We have another one that's out of town, and so, we're a little light. And I want to be sure that we have enough folks who take a vote on that action item. And I believe on that item, we need to have a brief executive session. I'm sorry?
Okay, we're going to go into a brief executive session to discuss this item, and then we'll come back and vote on it. The time is now six eighteen PM, and the media metropolitan transit board trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this exception are as follows, and it's just going to be one: the state lobbyist legislative consultants, which is an executive session, item pursuant to tax government code section five five one point oh seven one, and to consultation with attorney. All persons authorized to attend the executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. It is now six forty o'clock PM, and we are officially coming out of closed executive session regarding agenda items number eleven. No deliberation of public policy or vote-taking occurred during the executive session. Okay, we have one action item left on the agenda, and we're going to go ahead and take that up, and that's item number eleven, the state lobbyist legislative consultant. After that, one of our trustees has to leave, but we will still have the report for the rest of the trustees that will not require any action. So, with that, is it Charlie, you can make the presentation on the legislative?
Mr. Chairman, prior to the commencement of the item, please note my abstention for the record.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah, please note my abstention for the record prior to the commencement of this item.
So, what does that do in terms of our vote?
He just has to abstain while sitting right there.
Okay. He's not recusing himself, he's abstaining. Okay.
And just so, for the record, my abstention still counts towards the quorum, so we're fine for the quorum.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank God for lawyers.
I haven't heard that in a long time. But, and I'll do it quickly, because I know that we have Krusty Harrison, who has to get to a very important meeting. But what has been pending and what has been discussed, of course, is the outstanding basis of the lobbyist contract at the state level. As you know, the technical committee, along with the advisory panel, actually had recommended that we contract with the same representatives that we had the last few years. Garder and Weir, represented by Mark Vane, joined by local counsel Walter Serna, and then the other firm, that again is a joint venture, and that is going to be Mark Rodriguez and Luis Sines. And we had indicated how we arrived at that determination, and we are again placing before the board for its consideration whether you want to follow that recommendation and vote that we proceed to enter contracts with those two particular entities.
Thank you. And the recommendation again for the two teams of consultants is?
It's the Mark Vane of Garder and Weir, joined by Walter Serna, would be one team. The other team would be the joint effort, and that's going to be Mark Rodriguez and Luis Sines.
And Luis is with McGuire Woods Consulting.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No move.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions?
One.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that brings us back then to our modern streetcar update. Steve, I apologize again for interrupting you. And by the way, for those of you all that don't know, Steve Niven is with the Sabre Institute and is not the Sabre Institute. Just a peddly put the accent mark.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to come back and chat. I guess I'll pick off where we left off, talk a little bit about the methodology, and then I'll turn it over to Eric, let him get into more of the details. As I mentioned earlier, this was an update of the two thousand and eleven study that we did looking at the economic impact of streetcar. At that time, really the question was, would streetcar have an impact on development? It was part of the considerations to whether or not to proceed with the streetcar, and that was just part of the analysis that went forward, that we conducted. We looked at eight different routes, potential routes at that time. We'll talk a little bit in just a second about the full route that we looked at for this particular study. In this study, we looked at the time period over two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and forty, and basically, we assessed the transit-oriented development impacts that could be expected with the LPA, locally preferred alternative at full build-out. In order to do this, and Eric will talk about all this again in more detail, we looked at three different, three alternative development scenarios. One, we looked at what we called the no-build scenario, which was development without streetcar. So, in other words, how do we project that development would occur in this area along the streetcar route if streetcar was not implemented? We looked at a baseline scenario, which was a minimum level of development with streetcar. So, if streetcar was put into operation, how might that impact development at a minimum level? And then, we looked at an accelerated scenario, which was basically looking at what do we think would be, what do we project to be the maximum level of development of streetcar was put into operation? The analysis was, a lot of it was a GIS-based analysis. We also took into consideration what has happened in other parts of the country, other cities that have implemented streetcars, mainly Portland, Seattle, and Tampa. And again, we picked those three cities mainly because those are the only three cities in which we have hard data to analyze. And we also looked at what's going on anecdotally in other cities that have implemented streetcar systems that either haven't been in place as long or, and/or which data has not been collected yet. We also did a series of interviews, just to try to get a sense with local experts as to how might the development be impacted, how might the development patterns be impacted by streetcar, again, within about two blocks of either side of the alignment. And then, we took, once Eric developed the projections for the development patterns that might unfold, we took that and fed it through an economic impact model, some of which we developed ourselves, and also, we used an IMPLAN, which is an industry-standard input-output model, to take into consideration multiplier effects and other effects, and to get the overall impacts on employments and income. And we'll come back to that at the end of the discussion. So, I'm going to turn it over to Eric now, and let him talk you through the rest of the presentation until the end, and I'll talk about some of the results.
So, I'm sure you're, my name is Eric Hovey, economic consultant, working with Steve Niven on this project and Jay Farwell. I'm sure you're familiar with this map indicating the root alignment of the locally preferred alternative. The, as Steve mentioned, our work is an update of, is an assessment of eight different alternatives back in two thousand and eleven. And what you really see here with the LPA is the combination of three different ideas, one strong north-south spine and sort of an east-west loop that actually encompasses two different streets. So, where our work was really intended to evaluate this complete system, the areas that's shaded in green represents about a two-block distance from the alignment or any portion of the alignment. We, while we focused primarily on this complete locally preferred alternative, we did do some separate analysis of what the initial phase might be as compared with later-phase development, and the later phases are shown in more of the hashed lines. But I'll focus primarily on our evaluation of the complete LPA. Jay Farwell and Steve Niven undertook a series of stakeholder interviews back in two thousand and eleven, a very extensive set of interviews that also helped give us a pretty clear idea of what was in the works then in terms of development plans. We then supplemented that with this update with six more generalized interviews with six stakeholders, primarily in the development, real estate development industry for this study. And I think it was useful to have both the point in time about three years ago and then to see how perspectives have changed or in the last several years. In two thousand and eleven, I think what Jay and Steve heard was cautious support for a streetcar, but frankly, not necessarily a lot of clear understanding. It was a topic that was just beginning to be talked about. There was a clear sense that the permanence, just having the permanence of the tracks with the streetcars running on them would serve to encourage development. With this update, I think there's a, what I would characterize, sitting back and kind of seeing what we heard, is that there is a greater, more bullish optimism about what streetcar can deliver in terms of development, partly because people have seen what's happened in other cities and partly because they followed the planning in San Antonio. So, we heard terms like that this could be a spark for infill, this helps to connect the Pearl with South Town, and it could be a real catalyst for development. But overall, a greater sense of buy-in from those people that would be in the position to make real estate investment decisions, that yeah, that this is something that can make a difference. As Steve mentioned, we basically bring together information in our analysis that is very local-specific in terms of an understanding of the existing market, what have development trends been in recent years, what's the population forecast for the region as a whole, and we bring that together with looking at the experience of what's happened elsewhere, and as was mentioned, with probably the most detailed analyses having been conducted to date in Portland, Seattle, and Tampa. I would say that there's also more anecdotal information that we've mentioned in our report from other communities, including Dallas, Memphis, Savannah, and a smaller community, Kenosha, Wisconsin. And I think one that will be interesting to watch is Tucson, Arizona, which is just opening this year, and for which there's already been a report at eight hundred million dollars' worth of investment just in advance of the, of streetcar, as part of their, what's being termed their Sunlink system. One of the terms that we've used in our work is what we call streetcar premium, and that is defined as what's the measure of the impact that streetcar might have on development as compared with a no-build alternative? In other words, how much additional development opportunity are you getting and under what circumstances? And the circumstances that we looked at really were two different scenarios. One was what Steve described as a baseline scenario. So, the premium that we would look at there, or that option, would be that what does the baseline with streetcar scenario give you as compared with a no-build scenario in which you carry on with the existing transportation system largely as it is? We also looked at an accelerated scenario, which is saying what's the maximum likelihood you might be able to get based upon some city's experience less what you would get without streetcar? And for this work, we have used a streetcar premium that is derived from the baseline scenario. So, it's really a more conservative evaluation of what your opportunities are. I would want to say that in connection with the streetcar premium, that the question of where you end up between baseline and accelerated is in large measure a reflection of the degree to which that public-private partnership really comes together. And that can come together in a variety of standpoints. It can happen in terms of whether you have a local culture here for pioneering real estate development, and I think that clearly is taking place in San Antonio. You see it in River North and along Broadway, what's happening with the redevelopment of Hemisphere. So, there clearly is that tradition here. I think you also see it in some of the transit supportive planning things, which were just talked about a few minutes ago, as really being critical in setting the policy framework that will be supportive of transit-oriented development. And then, I think being able to make sure you have incentives for redevelopment that help to fill the gap where that's really needed, whether that's with affordable housing or in other areas. If you can get to that public-private partnership, I think that gives you the best chance to jump from the baseline towards the accelerated scenario. Well, what are the results of the work that we did? They're shown in these two sets of graph. The graph on the left, which is in the lighter blue, indicates the amount of development in square feet that might be expected with and without a streetcar. The no-build scenario, which again is just a reflection of continuing past trends and consistent with the growth forecast for the region, would suggest over the next twenty-five years about half a million square feet of additional, excuse me, about five million square feet of additional development. And that's on a base today of about eighteen and a half million square feet within the, within two blocks of the streetcar alignment. So, it would be about a thirty percent increase in the inventory of space that you have on the ground today. That's if you do nothing, if streetcar doesn't happen at all. The baseline scenario basically takes that from that half, that five million square-foot increase to about twelve and a half million. So, a little bit more than a doubling of the square footage with the baseline scenario. And then, if you end up with an accelerated situation, kind of the best-of-all-worlds, would take it to about nineteen and a half million square feet, which in effect is really a doubling of the square footage of inventory you have on the ground today. So, that's assuming some fairly aggressive assumptions. It's assuming a real, that real development culture, and it's assuming a real strong public-private partnership. When you look at it in terms of assessed valuation, which is shown in the three bars to the right, the current assessed valuation of the, in this quarter today is about one point eight billion dollars. With the no-build scenario, you perhaps get another half a billion dollars, another five hundred million dollars' worth of additional development. That goes to about one point four billion dollars with the baseline scenario, and to, in the range of about two point three billion dollars of added assessed valuation with the accelerated scenario. We have identified kind of what the streetcar, what the premium would be with streetcar, which is on the, kind of the little descriptions to the right, and in effect, if the premium is the difference between the baseline and the no-build, it's close to, what's about nine hundred million dollars of additional development above and beyond what you would get otherwise, and you get a similar increment if we're able to get up towards the accelerated scenario. That provides a sense of both the physical development and what it means in terms of assessed valuation, which really translates into what Steve will talk about now in terms of what does that mean for the bottom line in the way of economic impacts.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Now, we, in the numbers you just hear, I know there's a lot of numbers, I'm not going to go through each one of them individually, I'll go through it quickly, but in calculating the economic and fiscal impacts that will be derived from the development that Eric just talked about, we were as conservative as we could be and used the baseline scenario. So, those are reflective in the numbers here. That would lead to about seven million square feet of new development with a taxable value of about seven hundred and fifty-six million dollars. Over five thousand new residential units we would project to come into play over these twenty-five years. At full development, we would expect to see, and this is again at full development, the annual impact of the new businesses that we projected would come into the area would have an employment impact of about eighty-five hundred, and that includes multiplier effects, and those multiplier effects carry out throughout. And that includes multiplier effects, and those multiplier effects carry out throughout these numbers. And with the exception of some at the end there that I'll talk about. So those, that's not 8,500 per se along the line, it'd be about half of that we project along the streetcar line, but 8,500 would be the impact throughout San Antonio. Those, the folks in those positions would earn wages and benefits of about $387 million, and the overall impact would be about $1.3 billion annually. The construction of this new development would support employment of about 14,000 jobs over this time period. Wages and benefits of $704 million would flow to these workers with an economic impact of about $1.8 billion. And then just construction of the streetcar itself, over that roughly three-year period, would support employment of about 4,080 jobs, again with multiplier effects, wages and benefits of $206 million, and the overall impact just from the construction of $489 million. Now, that's not an annual number. Once that construction is done, those impacts recede and go away. The cumulative taxes that would be generated from the new development, the property tax revenues over this 25-year time period, now these are all in $20, $13, I should have said at the beginning, I apologize, is about $265 million. The sales tax revenues that would be generated over this period from the operations is about $53 million. And then the sales tax revenues from the construction of the new development would be about $4 million, so about $57 million total in sales tax revenues from the project and the development that it would facilitate. So it's a quick summary of the methodology and the impacts. And again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and for the opportunity to conduct the study.
I'd just like to follow up just a couple of the clarifications I asked you at the committee meeting because of some mischaracterizations that have been lodged at the report and at This, the methodology was limited or restricted to the LPA, correct? Just the 5.9 route?
Right.
5.9 miles?
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So did not include any assessment of the anticipated expansion nor southeast or west, correct?
No, just what was on the map there.
Okay. So did not include the, to the south, the LPA does really not go into South Town as yet, so it does not include the development or the factors in the fully-built-out South Town, for example?
Right.
Does not go really into the east, any development factors there?
No.
And does not include going further up Broadway to the museum area, the park, or beyond?
No.
And does not include going to the east out to the arena?
Oh, no. No, don't go out that far.
Okay.
That's a future contract.
And speaking about the contract, this wasn't something that was commissioned or you were engaged just solely by VIA, just for some self-serving purpose. This is required by the FTA, correct?
Yes, and that was brought up in one of the earlier presentations as well. It's required that an economic impact be submitted to them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a very good point, and there's some key points there. One of them is the environmental assessment with the FTA requires an economic impact analysis, number one. And number two, the two options that were considered were the baseline impact, baseline growth, and the accelerated growth. And the one that they chose to present, the numbers that we saw, were based upon that baseline or more conservative growth rate, which is not necessarily reflective of what's been experienced in other cities like Portland or Seattle. But it's more, it's really a more conservative approach. And so if you, I think the full report shows a range that could occur, but the numbers we've been presenting are all the conservative side of that range. And I think it's important to note that as well. I have one question, if you could go over to the slide that had the numbers on it? The, the construction jobs of the streetcar, the 4,080 jobs, are those part of the 14,000 jobs, or is that in addition to the 14,000 jobs?
That's in addition to, they're separate.
Okay. So they're two separate.
Yes.
One of them is just the construction of the streetcar system, the 5.9 mile-odd self.
Right.
And then the other one is the additional development that would be generated over the next 25 years.
Exactly. That's right.
In the two adjoining blocks near.
Right. And all the construction activity related to that, yes.
That's very important. And I think the key on the taxes is that that assumes existing dollar values and existing property tax rates. And so.
Yes, that's correct. And it does not also, I'm sorry, those are the assessed valuations of the new structures and that. We didn't include like personal property in that, that would be in the buildings and that as well.
Okay. So that's just the investment in the facilities. So that would not include personal property?
No.
So that's even more conservative.
Right.
Because each of those buildings are going to have desks and computers and things.
Exactly.
And on the sales tax revenues, is that the total eight and a fourth or eight and a half percent sales tax, or is it just VIA share of the half percent or the 5/8 percent? Or what is that?
No, that's the total to the city of San Antonio.
So that's 1%?
It's actually 2%. So it includes the VIA in there as well, but it's the total local sales tax.
So that's without the state portion?
Exactly. Right. Without 6 and 1/4 of the state.
So that includes the sales tax revenues for VIA, sales tax revenues for the city, sales tax revenues for the ATD, for the protection of the recharge zone.
Right.
And for the, in the pre-K 4SA program.
Right. Exactly.
So all of those programs benefit as well?
Yes, they do. And as do, you know, the property tax revenues, all the different, all those different agencies.
Sales tax revenues, for example, would go back, as property taxes are about, I would say a fourth of that $265 million would go to the city of San Antonio. That would be helping to pay for their debt service on their $32 million, plus their general fund contribution along with sales tax revenues that would help them deal with some of the other costs that they have.
Right. Exactly.
And with the school district, I think it's important to note that about half of that will go to the San Antonio Independent School District.
Yes.
About $130 million, $133 million, and which is a school, a district that is in great need financially in our community and provides educational opportunities for a growing portion of our population, and provides that workforce for the future. So it's one of those things that we can see as an investment today, that we're not going to see the results of that for another 20 or 25, 30 years, just like pre-K 4SA is an example.
Right.
I think, I think overall, I think we can see here that, number one, there is a positive impact. Number two, the numbers you presented here are conservative side of what the potential impact is, and therefore, we can probably anticipate that maybe there'll be some additional growth. Did this include, for example, any projects that have been announced already? Like, for example, there's a 300-unit apartment complex on Broadway has been announced about two months ago?
They're not directly included in large part because many of the project, we were really focused on the timeframe from about 2015, looking forward to 2040. So while some planned projects might be built during that timeframe, many of them would be likely built beforehand. So we didn't make an explicit accounting for those projects.
I'd tell you, been announced and nowhere near initiating construction. Okay. Well, thank you all for the report. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Jeff, did you want anything?
I had a question, just because, just for clarification purposes. When you look at assessed value, increase in assessed valuation, is that comprised of two elements? You know, new developments and then increased value of existing development? Or is that only one of those pieces?
It, in a way, it's both. It is definitely the value of the new development, and then what we look at is what the experience is or the relationship is between increased density of development and increasing land value, and increasing land value that would spread throughout that whole benefit corridor because it doesn't just benefit the property where the development happens, but it tends to benefit the surrounding.
So it would be a blend of both.
So it's both. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for that report. Brian, is there an update on the environmental assessment process?
Yeah, real quickly, we'd like to give a quick update. We've reached almost the milestone, and we want to give you a quick update on some of our environmental findings as we prepare for the environmental circulation of the environmental document here next month. So with that, Jesse and Sharon will give a quick presentation on the environmental aspects.
Very good. Thank you.
As you know, on the streetcar project, we have been working through the process of the alternatives analysis. We are currently in the phase of environmental assessment, and the next phase moving forward would be final design. We're happy to report that we have moved well through the environmental process and have an update here for you tonight on our next steps. We started with project scoping in March of this year and heard from the citizens as well as regulatory agencies on what issues were of concern from an environmental standpoint. And we immediately began assessing the impacts of the project against those comments and concerns, and covering all of the environmental technical areas that are required for environmental assessment. We have been in the last month compiling that into a document, which has been in review with VIA staff as well as the Federal Transit Administration, and we are very nearing the end of that review process, and we'll have a document soon for the public to review. Just to kind of recap, the purpose of why we prepare an environmental assessment is essentially to determine whether or not the project would have a significant effect on the environment. In the environmental assessment, we look at not just traditional environmental impacts to natural resources, but we look also at human and physical impacts from a social, economic, and environmental standpoint. We look at the impacts from a short-term and from a long-term standpoint, as well as which impacts are direct result of the project or an indirect result farther removed. For example, a direct impact would be the exact placement of tracks and poles, whereas an indirect would be spin-off development that could occur as a result of the project. We are currently in the final days of the FTA review and hopeful approval of the environmental assessment for a 30-day public circulation period. So the, we're going to give you some highlights of what we have found throughout the environmental assessment and what will be shared with the public over that public circulation period. With the caveat right now is we are still going through that process with FTA, and there may be some minor modifications to that as well. So once we have FTA's approval, we will be able to begin the 30-day public circulation period. We currently have that scheduled for August 5th until September 30th, with a public hearing scheduled right in the middle of that circulation period. So it gives people the opportunity to review the document prior to the hearing and/or come to the hearing and offer comments after they've heard our presentation at the public hearing. From there, we will be preparing responses to the comments from everyone who commented at the public hearing or during that public circulation period. And FTA reviews those comments as well as the responses, and then issues of finding a statement of whether the project does in fact have significant impacts or not. So what we will be presenting at the public hearing is essentially an overview of what was studied in the environmental document from an alternative standpoint, a discussion of the phase from Phase 1, which is called a minimum operable segment in the environmental document. We will present the results of the EA technical studies, and then we will describe the next steps in the process to the public, as well as how they can give us comments during the circulation period and at the EA. So the results of all of the work that has been done to date, essentially at this point, indicate that there are no significant or adverse impacts for all technical areas. The only caveat on that is that we are still waiting for that final federal approval, but at this point, that is the results of the technical analysis that we have unless there is additional comment by FTA. We do have short-term impacts that will be a result of the project, and these are, will result from construction. It will be typical to other utility-type project or roadway project in-street, and we're familiar with that, traffic interruptions, et cetera. So there were several technical areas that were studied in the environmental assessment that showed that there would be absolutely no effect or negligible effects. So we have those listed for you. If you have questions about those at the end of the presentation, feel free to ask In the category of no adverse effects or no significant effect means basically that we admit that there will be an impact as a result of the project, but it is not something that would be so severe or significant that it would interrupt normal day-to-day activities of a person or an environmental resource. One area to note that we've talked about in the past is the concern over historic resources and our heritage in San Antonio. We did extensive studies and have coordinated those studies with the Texas Historic Commission as well as the city of San Antonio's Office of Historic Preservation. And through that process, we received confirmation last week that they also agree that there would be no adverse effects as a result of the project. There are several other areas here. I won't talk through each of these, but if you do have questions about that after, please ask. Acquisitions is one that I do want to highlight. We have some minor corner clips, acquisitions, where the streetcar needs to make a turn and we need to tighten the roadway a little bit there, as well as the location of traction power substations and a maintenance facility. So overall, not a significant amount of acquisitions, but there are some. And we also have positive benefits from the project, like you just heard of the economic impacts. There are other positive benefits such as the air quality. We have, we will see a reduction in the regional vehicle miles traveled as a result of the project, and that will improve air quality. We have consistency with land use and several other access improvements to parks, community facilities, neighborhoods, education centers, environmental justice populations throughout. Of note, an area where we can't truly determine whether we have an effect or not is subsurface archaeological resources. So because the area is highly urbanized, it is heavily covered with concrete and streets, we can't just, you know, dig up and interrupt day-to-day traffic. So in those areas, we have negotiated and discussed with the Texas Historic Commission that we would have archaeologists in place during construction in the event that there is any resource that is identified during construction. We did find at the maintenance facility site, was one of the only sites that did not have cover, so we were able to do some trenching in that area and identified the Alazan Asechia. We were informed by the THC as well as the city that there was the likely presence on that site for the Alazan Asechia, and that was confirmed. And we have developed a mitigation plan where we would preserve that resource in place and would not essentially disturb any soils beyond two feet where the Asechia is located. So we have done a programmatic agreement with the Texas, for Texas Historic Commission review. We have federal approval of that document this week, and we'll be coordinating with them as well as the city's Office of Historic Preservation on the PA, which essentially outlines that construction archaeological monitoring that I just described. The next steps from here is to solidify that FTA approval for circulation of the document. We will have another briefing in August on the results and what we will be sharing at the public hearing, more specifically. We'll enter into the 30-day public circulation period and have the public hearing. Again, We'll enter into the 30-day public circulation period and have the public hearing, again, compiling the responses to those comments, and awaiting FTA's issuance of their finding. From there, the project will be completed, through the, the environmental phase will be completed, and we could then be eligible for federal funding for the project, and have the approval to move forward with right-of-way purchase. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments? I think we're well on the way to continue to move forward with this environmental assessment. It's important to note that the environmental assessment, although traditionally viewed as, you know, air quality and soils contamination, or whatever, also includes the economic impact that we talked about earlier, and other social impacts, historic preservation issues, and all those are included in this environmental assessment, and we're continuing to move forward. We want to encourage participation, and I hope in our community relations effort, we can remind people about the public hearing we're going to have on the 20th to, of August, to maximize feedback from the, from the public, and continue that communication dialogue that we've initiated. So thank you for that report, and if we have no further questions. Do we have an item for the executive session? No further items? We, we, we had some other items we were going to discuss, but we're not going to be, having lost a quorum, I think we're going to pass on that, we'll reconvene to that later. So that, that brings us to the last item, which is my item, and that is to say, we're adjourned.[1723.65][1723.65][music]